Okay, thank you and good evening and welcome to council Monday, Tuesday, sorry, Tuesday, October the fifteenth, twenty twenty four. I call the meeting at four P M. As always, remind everybody in the audience and councillors to turn off their mobile devices on Saturday. As councillor, does any addition to this to the agenda? There are none. Councillor Balance, that's definitely be right back. Councillor Suki, welcome online. I need a moment to accept the agenda for Tuesday, October fifteenth, twenty twenty four. Regime councillor is so later. Councillor Lake, second councillor, volunteer. Thank you. Yeah, just use your voice if you don't mind, councillor Suki.
Yep.
Thank you very much, appreciate it. Any declarations of interest this evening? There are none. I have a motion here that councillor, everybody accepts. Men's and women's and the closed media council are held on Monday, September ninth, twenty twenty four. Separated method, move by councillor Wheeler, sent by councillor Lake. Any questions, errors, or omissions in those minutes? Are we in a question on favor?
Yep.
Harry, thank you. Right into our delegation this evening. We've got, as always, at the beginning of our newly minted fall season of council, we adopt a couple of new student councillors and this should be a two new student councillors joining us. So Mr. Scorchenski is going to have you all come into the circle and do a swearing in ceremony. Please. So let's start with Madison. Just make sure you're facing the mayor and the flags. And Madison, just read it verbatim from two four.
I, Madison Mattos, having been appointed to the office of student councillor in the municipality of Marathon, do solemn promise and declare that, one, I will truly faithfully and impartially exercise this office to the best of my knowledge and ability. Two, I have not received and will not receive any payment or reward or promise thereof for the exercise of this office and in bias corrupt or any other improper manner. Three, I will disclose any pecuniary interest direct or indirect in accordance with the municipality conflict of interest act. And four, I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to His Majesty, King Charles the Third, or the reigning sovereign for the time being. And I make this solemn promise and declaration conscientiously believing it to be true and knowing that it is of the same force and effect as it made under oath.
How do you, Carson?
I, Carson Anthony, have been appointed to the office of student councillor in the municipality of Marathon. I solemnly promise and declare that I will truthfully, faithfully, and impartially exercise this office to the best of my knowledge and ability. I have not received and will not receive any payment or reward or promise thereof for the exercise of this office in a biased, corrupt, or in any other improper manner. I will disclose any pecuniary interest, direct or indirect, in accordance with the municipal conflict of interest act. I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to His Majesty, King Charles the Third, or the reigning sovereign for the time being. And I make this solemn promise and declaration conscientiously believing it to be true and knowing that it is of the same force and effect as it made under oath.
Perfect. Come on. There's no doubt, so you get the pictures, take them down. The person stood there, we'll do this with the floor.
A new cancellation, yeah.
Okay.
Well done, Carson.
Well, good. Thank you. Thanks.
Congratulations. Thank you. The mayor and the council.
I'm in the center. Smile, councillor Suki. There you go. There you go.
Thanks, guys. This is very nice. You're in. That's all.
Not quite councillor Anthony. So I'll put the spotlight back on both of you if you want to say a few words in regards to your getting sworn into the council tonight. If not, you don't feel comfortable, that only means you can wait till next council meeting to do a quick report on. We ask for you to do a report in each member of the council. Do you want to see a few words tonight? Absolutely. Madison, really, councillor Metzels?
So to begin, I'm not gonna lie, I would have never pictured myself here a year ago. Being on council, but I've never been something I would have thought of doing in the past. But having this opportunity come, I'm very excited and grateful to begin this journey with everybody. I'm looking forward to becoming a councillor to represent any perspectives that contributes greatly to our community. In Marathon High School, we have quite a few things going on lately. There's a parent teacher conference today at four thirty to six thirty. So you can make your appointments, can be made by parents via EdV. The grade eleven and twelve leadership class is organizing a haunted hallway. It will be open Friday, October twenty fifth, at seven to ten P M. And Saturday, October twenty sixth, from eight to eleven P M. The community is welcome to join and walk through the Halloween funk. The leadership class is also in the midst of organizing a remembrance day ceremony for the students that will be in the school. On November sixth, look forward to seeing some of our grade nine Falcons out in the community participating in National Take Our Kids To Work Day. This will help our Falcons get into the rotten field and get a great turnout. And more is all on the Facebook or EdV of the school.
Great, thank you very much. Councillor Adams.
Oh, well, I would say I'm the exact opposite. To start, this is years in the making for me. I have an oddball that has loved government since God knows ye age, but that's just me. Being part of this program, being it is the oldest program in Ontario, is a great honor and excites me, especially in the way this year that we want to elevate and create a new precedent for this role, right? And of course, me wanting to be a better representative and councillor for our student body. Getting into the report, it is hard to believe that you're six weeks into the school year already. It's flying by. I'm keeping myself busy. We've already flown through a sports season and we're in the midst of one still. As our Falcons take off to Terrace Bay on Thursday and participate in volleyball against the Stairs. We've already played in Annetswage and Terrace Basin here and the golf season has already happened. So I gave a shout out to the Marathon Golf Team. We placed second in Nibigan with a final score of three hundred and fifty seven and fourth at the regional and national championships of Thunder Bay with a score of three hundred and thirty three.
Great, thank you both for the reports and welcome aboard. You did great to have both of those introduction reports. So we're forward to hearing from you both over the next year or so and we're going to see what's happening in the student council world. But I appreciate you coming on board and taking part in our council. So thanks, welcome. Okay, we get ready to the business of council, which is now CEO report on the tiny homes update, Mr. Scorchenski.
So just an update for council tonight, a regular briefing on this tiny homes project, which again, one of those projects, a lot of scene, a lot of work behind the scenes before you actually get to see it upfront. So just want to give that update to council and the council has some, starting to see more interest from community residents on how they potentially purchase these types of, these homes in the future. So we had a planning team meeting last week, just to run through a critical path to kind of take us from October of twenty four to October of twenty five. So we need to draft a planning subdivision to complete for internal review because this is considered a new subdivision within the municipality. So through that process, we'll review and confirm that all planning act regulations are met. We're a single tier municipality, which means that where a councillor is the approver of the planning subdivision. It does need ministerial approval, so it's just following the process. Also, November, the planning subdivision submitted to the municipality. We needed it to be deemed a meeting apple. Need to have proper public notice as dictated by the planning act. For at least to have a public, a public meeting. That's not required anymore, just public notice is required. Councillor is the approving authority that I just mentioned. At that point, we'll be seeking draft approval from council in November. November, December twenty four, leading up to the Christmas break, prepare our expression of interest and request for proposals from a development perspective. Engineering design work by T B T Engineering on Thunder Bay is currently ongoing. We expect to have that complete by the end of December. We're currently at thirty percent working drawings. The subdivision requires a zoning bylaw amendment. A draft will be completed by the end of November for internal review. Then these provisions will be included in the expression of interest in the R F P. It's going to be required before we can transfer any title to any future developer. January twenty five, we're going to post those packages publicly, keep them open for thirty days and looking at splitting the project into two works, one being the civil requirements. We'll try and tie that in when we tender House Street next year. House Street is going to be doing pre-surfacing, that'll be in our twenty twenty five budget to save on costs there. And then phase two will actually be the construction of the modular homes, sheds and landscaping on site. February twenty twenty five, still a fraction of the development for the E O I process. I'm going to review our proposals to be scored by the project planning team. Obviously, come to council for final approval from a contractual perspective. Spring, summer twenty twenty five, civil construction. And then looking to start in the summer of twenty twenty five through the fall for housing construction. So we're about a year away from having shelters in the ground for housing construction, but right on schedule where we expect it to be. So with that, happy to answer any questions.
Anybody have any questions, councillor Valles?
Is it through the bylaw that keeps the affordability of the cost of the home so affordable? Or how will the comparative market analysis as a real estate agents use of the kind of like skirted away so that the cost of the home doesn't increase, increase, increase?
Yeah, so the way we've designed the project, so we're looking at this plan twenty homes and utilizing our expression of interest. So we call it expression of interest. Really what it is, pre-qualification. So we'll identify what a quarter, they'll use a round rubber and say a hundred and twenty five thousand. We still have the verified on, but if a developer can't meet that threshold, then they don't get pre-qualified. Once they're pre-qualified, then they go through the R F P process. The successful developer is selected and at that point, there won't be any real estate agents. The developer will be responsible for the title themselves. So we remove ourselves from the sale process. We don't pass experience. That's not a game we want to be in. So we'll transfer those twenty titles over to the developer who will have to pump through those costs to the municipality and they actually sell the homes themselves. One of the things that councillor recalls, we talked about, was having show homes. So one of the pre-qualifications as part of the R F P process is going to be they need to construct those homes on site so people can see them. So the process for utilized, obviously, we have our legal counsel advising on it. Protects the municipality a hundred percent, so we're not exposed to costs. But at the same time, we get to dictate what happens through the E O I and the R F P processes.
Councillor Suki?
Yeah, I think we've touched on this in previous meetings, but I just want to highlight again. In terms of costs, which I know we've received some funding for, the town will be responsible for the civil part of it, so the road sewers, and then the developer for any costs thereafter, correct?
Correct. So we're going to be using our Housing Accelerator Fund approval to complete the civil works. And we actually have some other dollars included in that funding and will to incent the development from an affordability perspective, to ensure that we do keep that to a priority and we get top of the line for the project.
Anybody else? Okay, I'll come back to that.
And I just wondered what councillor Balance was sort of talking to is that resale, right? How do you ensure long term that the project remains affordable? That is, I don't know if that's something that we work with the developer for or...
Yeah, so really, we remove ourselves from that process, right? Because, you know, it's, we're not getting into, you know, the leasing of lots, so when you're transferring title, you know, so if resident A decides to buy a home, they assume that title, so they legally own it. So, you know, it's, you know, almost, I would say it's impossible to ensure affordability, you know, stays where it should be. Really, you know, it's the initial affordability utilizing that housing accelerator fund is the role that we play. So, you know, through the process, we'll ensure that, you know, that they're constructed at affordable level. And then ultimately, it will be the market that dictates, you know, whether there's affordability. But the other thing we've done to ensure that, you know, we, you know, our proper stock moving forward is we do have two designs of the end like phase two subdivision. So one is, you know, a hundred and five, you know, family dwellings. The second is, you know, the schedule B is we've designed, designed at least one affordable housing cul-de-sac if you look forward to that development. So we built another affordable housing initiatives within the municipality to ensure that there's always that available stock.
That's right.
I think Mr. Scorchenski just answered what I was gonna ask. I was gonna ask if there was availability to have to build more of this property because I've heard lots of good feedback from the public just in the initial plans, so I'm expecting it to be popular.
Councillor Valles?
When we look at the civil build and stuff like that, are we close to access with the sewer, water, municipal water, all that? Or is it a bigger project to undertake to, like, how expensive, how, what will that all?
Yeah, and we're going through that process right now. By finally with House Street and the resurfacing, we'll ensure that we maximize the value. So, you know, we don't know exactly what those costs are going to be right now. It's safe to say that we can't use the old infrastructure, you know, obviously that was constructed in the fifties. But we'll have a really good handle on what that costing looks like. That's not paid for council when we meet in January as part of the twenty twenty five budget.
The one thing about the affordable building mandate, federal provincial limits, you know, put out in the year you had was that to be obvious, there's a lot of back stuff, work that has to be done before you can get to the build of the home. And that's reality. People say, what can't you build them now while you're just sort from our C E O? There's a lot of work background to make things happen and we're talking a twenty lot, imagine into the thousands or five hundred lots and bigger centers, right? And every community that I'm dealing with, an animal's experience in those very things, those very problems. And also the affordability, the fund was to identify affordability. The reality is developers ain't building, you know, hundred dollar homes. And typically, they're building million dollar homes so they can generate huge revenues for the development companies. And that's a real problem throughout Ontario and probably for that matter throughout Canada, so. We'll get this first one off the ground and hopefully, as we heard from Mr. Scorchenski, the hundred and five lot will be the next phase that we can tap into and get some good news from potential mine in our backyard, councillor Lake.
I'm just taking for the two new student councillors, we probably didn't do the one thing, which is to clarify what the project is. So it's behind the, that street that used to be there, that used to be the, the, the park. So, 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 forget it, it's, it's, it's.
No, we're looking at it, of course, how many, five to six hundred, so that will be in the.
The size, so twenty homes in that area for, for.
Okay, so no motion, just report on the updated progress of that, that process. Up next, we have a report on the wildfire area protection, if that you are know.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, the worship councillors and student councillors. I am here today to give you an information on the new agreement that the fire department will put in place with Newmont at their Golden Giant Mine property. Some of you may not know that Newmont operates what they call their interlake tailing facility on the site of the old Golden Giant Mine. Site is thirty five kilometers east of America on approximately. The mine opened in nineteen eighty five and closed in two thousand and six. Site has two buildings, water treatment plant and a security slash office building. And the tailings pond that is made up of five dams to contain all the tailings. The agreement is a continuation of the agreement that is already in place. Newmont will continue to pay a fee per year for the services provided by the Marathon Emergency Services. The agreement is for standby for the following itemized services. Availability via dispatch from black line safety devices, onsite fire risk assessments, onsite fire response, emergency, emergency search and rescue, remote sampling locations, one desktop training exercise a year, one mock training exercise every three years, and to assist with notification of downstream users in the event of a catastrophic tailings dam failure. Thank you for your time and I might be able to answer some questions on it if I don't have the answer for you.
Thanks for the report. I have a motion here that councillor, everybody accepts the attached report of revision on the emergency protection agreement with Newmont Canada. If we're not the appropriate bylaw be adopted later in this meeting, approving the fair protection agreement between Town of Marathon and Newmont Canada. Councillor Lake, second by councillor Wheeler, any questions on the chief? Councillor Lake?
Just so for the other Marathon agreements, we used to have, we used to have names, but we don't do those anymore. It's just Barrick and Newmont are the two?
And I think we do on bottom calls, we do some, have been out on bottom calls, but yeah, we don't do with any, like, buckets or anything.
So it doesn't stretch the force beyond?
No, and we wouldn't send out anything that would, like, leave the town unprotected. Good. What question? Okay, councillor Suki, go ahead.
Is that more so because of our experience with Barrick and all that that we were asked? Or the department was asked? Or is that just more of a state of the union as what other departments in the region look like as to why?
This agreement was in place before I started, so okay, I don't know when it first started. And it's just a continuation of what we had in place already.
Awesome. Councillor Suki?
Yep. I was just gonna ask, like, historically in the previous term, aside from like what's laid out in terms of itemized services, the ones that are scheduled, like the tabletop exercise, et cetera, were there many additional callouts on top of that?
No, I do not believe that we have ever been there to help them with anything.
Yeah. Just a quick follow up, was the, the fee for service the same as the previous term?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it was. Okay.
So just for council information, this fee has been there for a point while time was from the initiation of the agreement. They might start at six thousand with the sixty five, but it hasn't been adjusted. But as you heard from the chief, it doesn't, it hasn't reflected a lot of man hours, man time. It's just an agreement saying that we're there if need be. So, all good?
Yeah.
All questions on favor? Harry, thanks for that report. Up next, report on that successful tax sale of Fifty Seven Peninsula Road, Mr. Virgo, please.
Good day, Mayor, councillor. On May thirtieth, twenty twenty three, a tax arrears certificate was registered on this property. Its taxes were in arrears for at least two years. Property was offered in a public tender closing in July sixteenth. Two bids were received and then forfeited once the bidders discovered the crown leans. As of October tenth, outstanding tax arrears is three thousand dollars, of which three hundred dollars is the educational portion, the rest being taxes, penalties and illegal fees. Section three eighty one, sorry, section three eighty point one allows municipality to offer the land for second time within two years after the initial public sale. In effect, municipality has two years to determine if it desires ownership of the property. The minimum bid will be the amount owing on the tax roll. A portion of outstanding taxes can be written off in the meantime. Section three eighty three allows the municipality to vest or take over the ownership of the property. Once in possession, municipality must review whether or not it requires ownership of such property. If it's deemed to be surplus, it will be declared surplus and staff will proceed to follow the sale of surplus asset policy. Section three fifty four allows municipality to write off taxes whether or not the property is vested with the municipality. There are two liens on this property. One is Canada Revenue Agency and the other one is the Worker Safety Insurance Credit. At the regular meeting of council on July twenty second, twenty twenty four, council agreed to vest the neighboring property, which is Fifty Nine Peninsula Road. Section three fifty four allows taxes to be written off if the amount is considered uncollectible. The total tax outstanding is two thousand nine hundred and fifty four dollars and fifty five cents. The budget has allotted for tax write offs and in twenty twenty three, an allowance for doubtful accounts of seventy six thousand dollars was established. The budgeted tax write offs includes requests for reconsideration, assessment review board decisions and town properties. There will be legal expenses to vest ownership with the municipality. So the options are to register the notice of vesting in the name of the municipality, write off the taxes, declare the property surplus and sell the property in accordance with the town's policy. Or offer the property for public tender within the next two years or by July twenty twenty six. Administration recommends that option A be approved and that the property be vested with the town Marathon, tail standing taxes be written off and the property to be declared surplus.
Great, thanks for the report. I have a motion here that councillor, everybody accepts the attached report of revision on the unsuccessful tax sale of Fifty Seven Peninsula Road. If further the administration notice the vesting in the name of the municipality within their outstanding taxes to be written off. Move by. Councillor Valles, if you have any questions? Councillor Lake?
So the, the purpose of going with vesting instead of re-tendering is that there'd be no different outcome than the first time we did it.
It's unlikely.
Might as well go through the process, so that makes some sense.
And it will add value to the disposal of Fifty Nine Peninsula. There's two properties together, side by side.
Okay, so you can package the two. Do the, sorry, additional question. Do the crown leans disappear once the property is vested?
No, we have to go into discussions. So if you recall, the similar thing happened at Fifty Nine and administration working with the lien holders to see if we could work in arrangements so that we can surplus and remove the property gets sold to the highest bidder.
In that case. Neither lien holder has approached me yet. It's been difficult.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, but we've started the process, so that's the key. And I guess as frustrating as it is, like everything, it just takes a while and it is what it is, right? Any else? There are none, I call a question on favor. Harry, thanks for the report. Up next, I have a motion on councillor payable and check runs. The councillor, everybody for the check runs registers for August twenty twenty four. Councillor payable in the amount of one million, two hundred, twenty two thousand, nine hundred and three dollars and ninety cents and payable in the amount of three hundred and twenty six thousand, six hundred and twenty six dollars and sixty nine cents. Move by. Councillor Lake, second by councillor Valles. Any questions? There are none, call a question on favor. Harry? Up next, we have bylaw, bylaw, number eight, sorry, twenty eighty two being a bylaw to authorize the fire protection agreement between the Town of Marathon and Newmont Canada to be read a first, second and third time. It probably passes fifteenth day of October, twenty twenty four. Move by. Councillor Valles, second by councillor Wheeler, any questions on this bylaw? Pretty straightforward, as we heard from the chief. All in favor?
Yep.
Harry, thank you. We've got some items on our new business. Information received from Roma, Roma Volunteer Municipal Association regarding the annual congress coming up, scheduled in Toronto for January nineteenth through twenty one. I need a moment for that on the floor. Councillor Lake, second by councillor Wheeler. So our attendance will be C E Os Scorchenski, Maradunas and... Councillor Valles?
Okay, yeah.
Okay. Anybody else?
Yeah.
Councillor Wheeler?
Do we know which ministers will be there at any chance?
We don't yet.
We don't, okay.
The chairman's not there.
Okay. So with that being said, I call a question that councillor Valles, Wheeler, Maradunas and C E Os Scorchenski attend the Roma Congress. Delegation will be probably issued early November, meant to November to December. Get them in and then try and meet with the government officials. And hopefully, through the application process, we'll have much more understanding with the E R C. And have some good news, hopefully it will impact the community, but we'll see how that happens, so. Good, all in favor? Harry, thank you very much. And information received from the public library, I have a motion here that the council hereby pertains October twentieth to twenty sixth, sorry, October twenty, twenty sixth, Ontario Public Library Week in and for Town of Marathon. Move by. Councillor Valles, second by councillor Lake, any questions on that? I encourage all residents and businesses alike to attend our library. As you know, it's a very well run program and lots of different programs for youth and people within our communities and you're doing a great job, councillor Valles.
I do have something to add. I attended one of the escape rooms put on by the Marathon Public Library last, I want to say it was two weeks ago, and they do a great job of the delivery with the game and everything. Yeah, we were sweating. We almost didn't make it out. We, I think we had like fifty eight seconds or something like that, but yeah, no, great job. And so if anyone hasn't tried an escape room at the public library yet, I encourage you to find a team of sense and try it out because, yeah, it was great.
Good. Anything else?
Sounds like council bonding, I think.
Thanks, people, please, there, I don't know, councillor Lake. That's how we find out we're in the room. Okay, I call a question on Harry. Harry, thank you. I have a motion here, council resolution in regards to Town of Colberg's request. The council hereby supports the attachments received in the Town of Colberg pertaining to the support of involuntary care for individuals with severe mental health and addiction issues and for the. for individuals with severe mental health and addiction issues, and further copy the motion before that individual listed on the original resolution, I will move our say up a four, councillor Valance, councillor Lake. This one is in regards to, as you know, we were facing a lot more mental health and addiction issues within all of our communities throughout Ontario, probably all Canada for that matter. And there is no mechanism within the law to involuntarily suspend or apprehended individual and put them in custody unless they've been identified by a physician. And then there's a forming process which could take anywhere from three days to three days of forming to try to get the individual back on track. So I think it's a great one, and there's many wording within the resolution, but if you want anybody else to think comments on that, councillor Lake?
Yeah, you know, my own concern with it was certainly we are seeing more and more cognitive issues in our region. But from the, I know there's not enough beds in the hospitals right now. I certainly wouldn't want to support anything that would put more stress on those beds that are already so limited. So I don't know if, I don't know what CEO of the hospital would say about supporting something like this, if it's going to put additional pressures on those spaces, if it's through the justice system, I think there is more physical room in some of those places. That was, as I admitted, that was my only concern, I think about our hospital and how people are already in sometimes in the hallways and so putting people into those things that don't even want to be there, certainly puts some stress on that system. I didn't know if that's, if I was reading it wrong, or?
Well, let me read for the public's information, just therefore be resolved that the Town of Colbert supports BC government's approach to provide secure involuntary care for individuals with severe mental health and addiction challenges as a compassionate and mandatory intervention for those unable to seek help on their own. And further that Corporation of Town of Colbert urges Province Ontario to implement similar measures to ensure that individuals with severe mental health and addiction issues in Ontario have access to secure involuntary care when necessary.
I assume that means the hospital?
Well, not necessarily, because even our hospital, my ability to deal with a lot of patients that get formed here, identified and shipped off to Thunder Bay, where there is facilities there, but then you're right, there is pressures on all facilities, so. Pressure from on the transportation of individuals with their policing services becomes a bigger snowball really quickly with one individual. One individual could bring on huge amounts of cost to individual municipalities through policing and mental and then healthcare, if they're not done with. Because you can release somebody and then, you know, an hour later, five hours later, they're back at the same scenario and they're back in the process. So they have to be formed, or they have to be involuntarily admitted, and it's a real struggle. And if you've traveled anywhere in the last six months or year post-COVID, we see in all mental centers and urban centers that it's really, really, really major problem with conditions, homelessness, and mental health. So somewhere along the way, this starts the process, I think, of discussions on how that looks maybe.
So definitely what the resolution is trying to achieve is actually taking the pressure off the policing and hospital system. Because right now, you know, for Marathon, for example, we don't have these care facilities, so that's where the pressure is put on. So by having this type of system in place, right, should remove some of those pressures on our local agencies.
Thank you. That makes sense, reading it incredibly well.
Yeah, it's a tough goal, and it really is, and I don't know what the answer is, but at least discussions can start from this process. And AMO's been working on it for two years, I said as part of the committee. It's a struggle, and I listen to all my peers at the AMO board, and every municipality in Ontario is facing this struggle. At different levels of impact, obviously, you know, pro capita is going to be a big part of it, our community's small, so the problem seems to be small, but in our community, the problem's big. But pro capita, if you look in the, you know, city of four hundred thousand, the problem is multiplied by that many more pro capita than they seen it a lot more, so we're all experiencing the problems, how do we resolve, that's the question, right? You ready, councillor Suki? Okay, thank you, I'll call a question on favor. Thank you very much. Next one up, I have is in regards to the NOMA's resolution to support the attached resources received from NOMA, no question, some social pertaining to the future of Bishop Airport requires urgent action and to a modern governing agreement, but being put in place by the Province of Ontario, the city of Toronto. Due to the fact that they're going to be requiring to look at expanding the actual island airport. It's going to have impacts both environmentally, of course, that's a big thing, and they're being required to look at all this now to make sure it happens in the time that's going to be needed. We all know to environmental processes, assessments they take all the time, so if you were to second to put this on the phone. Councillor Valance, councillor Luther, any questions here on that?
We all need that airport, that's our lifeline in the city, we need this for them.
And it's a process, that's the thing that they're looking at right now, is getting the process started. They're asking for support from all associations, so it's promised to assure the Government of Ontario that the talks have to start now and get the process done, so if there's good, all in favor? Very thanks. Prior to adjournment, we have a couple of announcements. Sorry, councillor Suki, oh, sorry, yeah, fifteen, councillor Suki, that's right, but that important announcement, councillor Suki, you're on.
Thank you, your worship. As many of you know, that my family and I have relocated to Thunder Bay. So I want to take the opportunity of this meeting to address council, administration, and the constituents that I'll be resigning from my position as a council member for the Town of Marathon. And just want to extend my gratitude to everyone who took the time to vote and elect me into council, it's not something that I took for granted. And, you know, I feel very grateful for everyone trusting me. And just feel like I'm forever in debt to the Town of Marathon, I was born there, left for school, moved back, started my business there with my wife, started our family there with the three kids, and, you know, and people ask me, you know, move into bigger and better, and I'm not. Like Marathon's a great place to live, and my heart will always be there, so I just want to, you know, it's bittersweet, but just want to take the opportunity to notify everyone that I will be resigning at the end of the month, so, thank you.
Well, councillor Suki, thank you very much, and obviously we were fully aware that this was coming on from councillor Suki, and he said to make it official at today's meeting. What they talk to you, thank you for working with for the last couple of years, you really have a lot of insights to the council. And as a new council member, but at the same time as a youth, and, you know, we want that youth vibrancy in our community and especially on council, so really want to thank you publicly for your service, and hopefully you'll look at the city of Thunder Bay as an opportunity to provide some services there as a young councillor in the city of Thunder Bay in the next election of twenty twenty-six. So think about that, but same time, I hope to see you back and continue focusing on some of the great things within the region, and I'm sure we run it to from time to time, so. If somebody else wanted to have a word?
I mean, I guess I would say, Zach, that what I appreciate, and you talked about it when you ran for council, and I think because we have the two young student councillors here, is that that's the model how communities work, right? Is, you know, you were raised by a community and then you gave back to it. And you've always spoken really well about the need for the future of our municipality, not just thinking about the past, and I always really appreciate that about you, and I think you're a very role model for the young folks that just joined us today.
Great, thanks, councillor Lake, councillor, really nice to meet you.
Yeah, just thanks for, Zach helped me when I was a new councillor, and one talked to me before I ran for council, so thanks for that, and thanks for being a leader in the community, Zach, I'm sure you're going to do great things in Thunder Bay.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Man, just thank you everything, Zach, I'll never forget our phone call when I was in Toronto after the election wrapped up and everything like that, I appreciate all of our conversations. The time we got to kind of learn from each other, and I guess this isn't goodbye, it's, we'll see you soon, you'll be back in a year, so.
I'll definitely be back.
Thanks, Zach, I appreciate it, and you're working with CEO Skorchinsky in regards to the wrapping up of this, and CEO Skorchinsky will bring a report to council, our next meeting, and throughout the process that council will take going forward, and we'll have a report on that in the next meeting. Great, thank you for that, thanks a lot, councillor Suki.
Thank you, guys.
Yeah, thank you, and before adjournment, I do have a couple of announcements, that the grand opening of our Marathon Works operations building will take place on October twenty-third, twenty twenty-four, nine a.m. to eight p.m. roughly all day, and there'll be multiple changeovers. Mr. Paris, Mrs. Skorchinsky would make coffee all day, provide an update on the facility, so thank you for that. And it's a very, very amazing facility, it provides an excellent workplace for our employees, and of course for the service of our community for the next fifty to seventy years, as all typical buildings run out of their due time, but this one will provide services long after we're probably gone, but that's great, and before, does anybody want to pop into that? Of course, Local Government Week coming up, Sunday, October twentieth, Saturday, October twenty-sixth. And Local Government Week is something that we started, that's how we started our student council program in two thousand and eleven, was going talking to the students at the high schools and talking about what the municipal government does for you, Mr. Pally, and it's a great introduction, because a lot of, you know, youth don't understand what government is, what they do, and how they provide services, mums and dads do, and ready parents do because they got to pay the bill. But the reality is that youth is always wanting to learn, and I'm glad when I heard from both you, specifically you, councillor Anthony, about how eager you're for government, and if you, councillor Meadows will be that eager at the end of the year, understanding government, but it's good to see youth engagement, that's the key for government week is understanding, not just for youth, but also for residents alike, so that's taking place toward the end of the fall, and the week of twentieth to twenty-sixth of October. We're going, heading off to be in right after this meeting, public meeting, and we're going to be discussing various things and projects. We talked before we got on air, well, the importance of our relationship, we've had a relationship in meetings with our neighbor community. Probably two thousand six, seven, we started this process, and we try to meet every three months to discuss like-minded issues of our communities and how we move forward. And so it's going to be an interesting meeting, we're going to talk about things that we have on the go, and of course, specifically the Port Authority, and hopefully some information around the ALC, and we'll have an opportunity, we're going to invite our student council, if they want to come down to chat and have an opportunity to meet with BS council, and just to see how the process works with our relationship, and it's a good, it's a good learning tool, so. But that being said, we'll adjourn the meeting at the hour of five, four forty p.m. Move by councillor Lake, second by councillor Valance, thank you very much, councillor Suki, see you next time.
Thank you, take care.
Okay, thanks. Thank you.